Okay, good evening. Welcome to the 1,980th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. Today's November 1st of 2023. Today, Councilman Scott Morgan is assigned to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, but he has some very special helpers here from BSA PAC 1640. If you wouldn't mind standing up here and please come on up to the front and we'll go on your cue. Right there, stop right there so the camera can see you. Nope, look this way.
Yep.
Stop right there, the camera's gonna put you on television. Okay? So whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Good job.
All right, do you guys want to get a picture?
Yes.
I told him I would with the council.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Get a picture there. We maybe, maybe we can...
Stand there.
What?
You down?
No.
No, they, they...
No, it's not me.
Before you...
No, they, they had asked.
Good job, guys.
Good job, guys. I'm gonna stand back here.
You can be the vlogging head in the background.
I could be, oh.
Oh, come on, voley the head.
All right.
All right.
Be close, guys, stay close, close.
Smile.
Jeez. My man's trying to get the wave going.
Hey. Obracis, guys.
There's always more than every group. Hello, you have a good job, guys.
The kid doing the wave.
Yeah.
Yes.
I was gonna say.
You all did a very nice job.
Excuse me, do you know, like, can you excuse me? Have you gone to dinner?
You are, listen, I would go to dinner right now too if I were you. I'm actually kinda hopeful, like...
President Jolly cannot excuse to go to dinner.
Hey, have a good night, enjoy it.
Last one yet.
That kid's going somewhere, he's got chops.
All right, so, like I indicated earlier, tonight is a regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This will be a voting meeting and the minutes of this meeting will be approved on Monday, November 13th of 2023. Ms. Nash, will you please take the attendance role?
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember McCullough.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Vice President Toy.
Here.
Councilmember Barr.
Here.
Councilmember Donavick.
Here.
President Jolly.
Present. We have all seven members of the council here tonight. At this time, I would entertain a motion in regards to the October 16th regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion to approve by Donavick, support from McCullough. Are there any additions or subtractions or comments on the minutes? I see none from the council. Are there any comments or additions from the audience in regards to the minutes? Seeing none, Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on that, please?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The minutes are approved. At this time, the council has set aside 30 minutes for public comment to the council if anybody would like to address us on any items that are not on the agenda tonight. If you do have public comment, please come to the podium. You will have three minutes. Ms. McIntyre is our council parliamentarian. She's gonna keep track with this big clock up here. Good evening, sir. Tell me your name for the record.
Good evening. Steve King, 33950 Coventry, longtime Livonia resident, Livonia's oldest teenager, as a matter of fact. I just wanted to, I just wanted to congratulate all of the candidates that are running for, for office this year and thank them for their accessibility. There's been a lot of events where they all attended, all of them, and we were able to talk one-on-one, face-to-face, and it was, it was very nice, and I, I hope that, that frankness and openness continues after the election, so thanks, thanks to the candidates.
Thank you, Mr. King. Is there anybody else wishing to address the council? Seeing none, we will go on to council comments. I'll get that started. We'd like to wish a happy birthday to Deputy Police Chief Ben McDermott. We do have a public hearing on November 8th. That's how we're celebrating the deputy chief's birthday, by having a public hearing. I don't think he'll be in attendance, though. And at this time, I'd like to welcome up our library director, Kristin Edson, to the podium. She's gonna give us an update about some exciting news over at the library.
Thank you, Councilperson. Let me...
Exciting news and library. Same stuff.
Thank you so much for your time this evening and attention. I believe everyone can see what is on my computer and also the people at home should also be able to, to see that as well. So, tonight, I just wanted to give you guys a look at the community engagement website that we are using to collect information for the library's strategic plan. Also, at each of your places, you have a little stack of postcards for you to help share the opportunity with friends, family, professional coworkers, the ability to respond to our survey. So if you go to the Livonia Public Library's website, livonypubliclibrary.org or info, you will see this lovely screenshot. Of course, it moved, but there's also always this link down here where you can access the website, which takes you to this page here. So, these are all of the ways that people can interact with the website. It's not just the survey, so if you happen to not be able to take the time to fill out the 13-question survey, which really should only take you about five minutes, there are other opportunities. You can register for a public focus group. There are two, one on Monday, December 4th at 11:00 a.m. and one at Tuesday, December 5th at 7:00 p.m. All will be at the Civic Center Library in the Michigan Room on the first floor. You can also simply rank the priorities of what you would like to see at the library. This is also a mobile-friendly site. I think the experience is a little bit better on the computer, but it will also work on your phone, a screen of any size. So you simply drag and drop, and you can tell us which three of these things is important to you, and then at the bottom, you click Submit. I'm not gonna be doing any of that right now. We also have this step four where it says, "Show us where you want services." So you can enter an address. It does have to be a specific address within Google Maps. So this is one of our housing, Newburg Village, and then you simply click Add Marker, and you can do it that way. We'll go into the meat of the survey here. Again, a lot of them are very quick questions because we do want people to be able to go through this and in a, in a timely manner and not get all tired of being asked questions, but a lot of them are also, again, being able to drag or drop. If you're doing it on your mobile phone, you simply click on it, it should highlight it green, and those are the selections that you've made for any of these pullover sites. At the bottom, you have to click Next, and I will say, received a few comments that question number five wasn't working quite right until earlier today, but it has been fixed. This is a checkbox option because we want you to choose as many of these items as you would like. Earlier, it was just allowing you to check one box. So like I said, there are 13, 13 questions, and we are encouraging people from the ages of 13 to 17 to take the survey as well. We do have a very active teen council, so I thought it was very important to make sure that they were able to select their age appropriateness, but for any parent in here, for someone who's under 13, you have to take it for your children. On the left side over here, if, again, you don't wanna do any of those four options, you can just share your big idea with us, and that will be recorded. And then there's this also, also this question here in the lower right-hand corner, "What are your favorite library activities?" So that we know what we are already doing well, and that will just support us continuing to do that service or program in the future. So, that is the basic site. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, I just wanna be clear, so this is part of the comprehensive master plan of the library system, correct?
This is part of the strategic plan.
The strategic plan. And what, can you give us some highlight in regards to what, what that is, how long it's been since we've done that?
We've...
Give, give the people an overview a little bit so they, they can know how important...
You mean I just jumped, you mean I just jumped right in and just...
Well, you did the important part, but tell them why this is important in regards to letting their opinion be known.
So the Livonia Public Library has never done a strategic plan before. The importance of this is because we need to know what we're doing, if we are meeting your needs, and this is one of the best ways for us at the library to know that. So, right now, we've, you know, gone off of past attendance numbers, circulation, how people are using the library, but this is an opportunity for people to think big and kinda go pie in the sky with what they would like their library to look like in the future, moving forward. Strategic plans are usually done for three to five years at a time, and each of the goals that come out of this process are supposed to be measurable and achievable so that we can actually be held accountable for meeting your needs from what you've told us through the community survey or the focus groups. So it's very important because, again, while the library is a very important department for, for everyone, we don't always know if we're providing everyone with what they are needing. So this is kind of that check to make sure we're listening to you and giving you what you want and what you need.
Okay, and then the last thing I, can you give them the, the direction, how to find that survey that you just introduced?
Sure. Again, you go to the Livonia Public Library's website, livonypubliclibrary.org or livonialibrary.info, and there is, this is what it looks like at the top. There is a big picture in the carousel, but there's also this little banner down here where it says, "Livonia Public Library, Strategic Plan Available Now," and you just click here, or you can also click on the picture. Sorry.
And I lied just a little bit. Are there, will there be other public events as well?
So there are only two public focus groups, but there are additional focus groups for key stakeholders. As a matter of fact, all of you here should have received an invitation from me this afternoon. So did some government, not government, your guys are government, business leaders, education leaders, and nonprofit leaders in the area, as well as our friends of the Livonia Public Library. They have their own special focus group. We can't unfortunately offer, you know, a, a public event for, for everyone, but two is a good balance number for our size population from the, at least that's what the consultants determined. So this is the biggest community engagement tool that we have is this website, so that's why even if you cannot attend the focus group, I included that link in your invitation. And I will say, I just sent those invitations out a few hours ago, and already to every single focus group, we have received RSVPs. And today is the first day we're really kind of pushing this out, and I did give out the web address and some of those postcards to our library commissioners, and so the public has kind of already found out about it, and we already have some RSVPs to the public sessions as well. So, the space is limited because, again, there's only one or two facilitators, they can't wrangle, you know, 200 people or so, but I believe the, the space is allotted for 40 persons in each focus group.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Kristin. Is there anybody from the council? We'll go to Mr. Morgan.
Yes, Kristin, I, I appreciate your time and coming out here and seeing us today. I have a quick question for you. In the strategic plan that is set forth, is, is this going to incorporate what the community would like to see as far as our library, a library in the south end, a library in the north end, or is it also going to, it's just focused on specific things and not that?
Correct. So, the difference between a facilities master plan and a strategic plan is, a strategic plan is focusing more on programs, services, and collections, the use of the library. There is a little bit of talk about some of, there's space, there's a specific space question, and then some of the things, topics, like what type of programming you would like to see, equipment, software, and those do lend themselves to informing us of the type of space that is needed in the library in order to carry out those programs and services, but it's not a facilities master plan, it is a strategic plan, so it kinda focuses on, on those types of topics, though it'll be tangential what is actually gained as far as the facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, Council President, through the chair. So the question, so going back to that, so obviously the strategic plan, this is the start of it. Prior to when you came in, I wanna say probably about six to seven months ago, we did have a long-term, I know we, we hired consultants. Is this gonna be done in conjunction? Because I do appreciate the facilities needs, but obviously, when you start looking at programming, it should kind of, you know, overlap almost in some senses of where, what our need is going forward, correct?
Correct. That's why I say, you know, what programs and services that the, the community wants does inform what your facility needs to have in it in order to carry those things out. So while it's not the, the main focus, it will inform that. And it is the same library consultants, we haven't switched library consultants.
Do you know, going back to the report that we approved like six or seven months ago, is that completed yet? Do you know?
I do not know which report you speak of.
All right. I'll take it offline just to figure out exactly, but we did approve something a while back that was going to have some kind of a long-term needs assessment. I think it was more than facilities, just trying to make sure, obviously, you don't have to do two things at one time.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Barr.
How long do you anticipate this being open?
Sure. It does say on the website, but I haven't said it yet, December 15th, and that's the cutoff date for our consultants to be able to meet their timeline for the finished product to be delivered in March of 2024.
Okay, and I think I can offer some clarity on Mr. McCullough's question. We did approve something, but the administration's communicated all along that that was going to wait until we had a new director in place, so, I mean, I think what you're doing right now is exactly what we had approved, so, if I'm not mistaken, so, thanks.
Mr. Donavick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for being here tonight. Welcome. I know it's been a few months now and looking forward to seeing you more and doing more in terms of our libraries because they are very important. I know some of my colleagues already referenced the future of what our libraries look like in Livonia, and I really appreciate to your perspective of the programming and what, what we're gonna do inside of our libraries, but the biggest thing to me is, again, what is the future of our libraries, right? How many do we have? We have one, for example, that has been closed down since 2019. Prior to being closed down in 2019, it was barely open. It was open maybe three days a week because there wasn't enough people going to that library to utilize it to actually warrant having it open five days a week or what have you, and I'm very passionate about the libraries because clearly we are moving in a certain direction, our society, in our country, in the world with technology, and we have one of the most successful cities in the state of Michigan, and I would say, our libraries do not meet the standard that our residents deserve and you deserve as a director and what we deserve as a community in general. I mean, we're moving in the direction in this world where everything is, is on tablet based. Everything is traditionally changed from books and hard paper to, to technology, and you go to our library and it's not retrofitted for that, and it's really frustrating because we are moving in a different direction, and we have to make sure we provide our residents, our young people, all sorts of people, the, the technology, the needs and whatnots, and I hope that we talk about that because I think a needs assessment is a big deal. Council's been waiting from the administration to do something and take some sort of action on Noble Library, and we're just kinda sitting around, and, and I'm excited to see you here talking about the future of what our libraries look like, but I really think we can't make an educated decision on what the future looks like altogether until we find out what the spaces are like. How many do we have? Do we have one, two, three, and so on and so forth? So, I'm definitely gonna be at this event, and I, I'm thankful that you guys are opening up to the community to kinda give feedback because, again, libraries are so important and what the future of them look like in our city. We make those decisions today, they will steer the course for the next 20 or 30 years. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. So Kristin, if you receive some feedback via the survey about a person requesting like a graphic novel about somebody who's a facilities manager by day and superhero councilman by night, it might be Mr. McCullough. You don't have to do anything with that feedback that you got, but we really appreciate you being here. We wish you the best of luck. We've been waiting for you to come, and now you're here and you're hitting the ground running, so thank you very much and good luck. Let us know what you need.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time, and one last thing. The consultants want or need us to have at least 400 respondents to this, to be a statistically significant response rate for our population size, but I know that the city of Livonia can do better than that. I've seen it so far with all of the volunteerism and the giving of the time, so we can break that 400 easy, and with your help, I know that we can do that. So thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
You have one more question from Mr. Barr.
Yeah, just something you said there just prompted another question. So, appreciate the push for 400, but maybe significantly, statistically significant by number, but how are we making sure that we're getting a representative distribution across the city? Like, I'm sure you're plugging this in the library, but we, we probably have a lot of people that aren't frequenting the library that we really wanna hear from them too. How are we making sure that we spread it to all the people that we wanna hear from and not just getting one niche group?
So, we are partnering with the Communications Department at the city. The library employees are gonna start going out and placing those cards in, in local businesses, medical office groups, it's in connections. It's also gonna be in the Livonia Today magazine. I dropped off cards to the Chamber to include in their new resident bags because they put them out once a month, and so they, they should be going out at least in the December bags. All of our social media channels, word of mouth, I'm here tonight. I imagine there are some people watching this or here tonight that, that aren't regular library users, so, so yeah, we have a pretty comprehensive marketing plan, and it's just now starting to push off, so.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go to council announcements now. We're gonna go first to Ms. McIntyre, who has some retirees to announce.
Thank you, Chairman Jolly. I have one, Elizabeth Kobe. She is a Librarian I. She has been with the city for 25 years. She started on the 8th of September in 1998, and she retired on November, I'm sorry, on October 3rd of this year. So we wish her the best. We thank her for her many years of wonderful service, clearly as the librarian. She came in contact, as a librarian, at one of our libraries, came in contact with a lot of Livonia residents and probably enriched the lives of many. So, congratulations, Elizabeth, and we wish you a long and happy and book-filled retirement. Thank you.
Cheers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Ms. Toy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As many of you know, I'm very involved in the human trafficking crisis that we have in our country and our world, and I just want to inform residents, and many of you have been to a lot of the seminars we've put on and know some of the red flags that are going on, and that changes a lot as well, especially with children, which has been a very serious topic of late and continues to be, but my dear friend and almost daughter, Dylann Westbrook, will be on Channel 4 tomorrow night at 5 o'clock explaining the crisis, and if any of you are interested in that topic, I urge you to hear her story. She was a runaway and brought to the east side of the state by Mr. Detroit, and I won't go into details because her story is one that's very compelling and very successful. She's right now working on her master's degree after being on the streets for 17 years and in prison for three, and it just gives you a story of what love can do and compassion and caring about people, and many of you here have helped along the way that, as well, you know, with Dylann. And so I just wanted to inform everyone, tomorrow night, Channel 4, if you're around, please tune in at 5 o'clock and hear her story. It's, it's very moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. Ms. McIntyre?
I'd just like to, again, thank the scouts who are here tonight, and I'd like to also especially thank their leaders and all of the parents who are part of the troop. Scouting is such a great experience for kids for a lot of reasons. It's about community, it's about self-reliance, it's about getting out in nature, and it takes a lot of work to lead a scout troop. It takes a lot of hours of dedicated service, it takes a lot of training, and that, that those hours and that time come at the expense of your own hobbies and your own family sometimes, but I also wanna thank the parents because I'm sure, I know from my boy's years in scouting, that it's the parents who step up to make sure that the kids get to the meetings, the kids have what they need, help out on the field trips, help out on the camping trips, and it is just a beacon of goodness, and so thank you very much. It's always a pleasure and an honor to have scouts here, but a special thank you to all of, all of you who helped lead the troop and give of your own time selflessly to do this, and come back and see us anytime.
President Jolly.
Mr. Donavick.
Councilwoman Kathleen McIntyre is talking from experience because her son graduated as an Eagle Scout, so she knows all about the long hours as a mom and as a parent and helping out the kids, so it's pretty cool to see all you here today. And then also wanted to note, one of the parents or one of the scout leaders told me that every year, or last year and this year, on Veterans Day, they go to one of the local cemeteries and they allow, they lay flowers at the graves of veterans, and Scott Morgan was a veteran in the Marine Corps and myself in the Army, so it's really cool that you guys go out and spend your day on Veterans Day because Veterans Day is so important. So, thank you to the scouts and thank you to the parents that are instilling those sorts of values in, in our kids. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Ms. McIntyre?
Yes, we don't, I know, I guess Mr. Bernier's here tonight representing the administration since we don't have anybody else here, but I've gotten a lot of questions about why we've got all of our public transit, our community transit buses parked in the Livonia Police Department parking lot. I've gotten some different answers from some folks that I've asked. It seems to me that that is not really an appropriate location to serve as a bus depot. I, I realize they were moved due to a special event at the senior center, and there were some problems with them being stored in the, in the regular, I think we were storing them in the LPS bus depot, and there were some problems. So, Mr. Bernier, if you could please ask the administration, and then the other, there are a lot of buses there. I didn't realize, and I paid pretty close attention, number of buses we have. I'm interested to know if all of those buses are in service and also where we are with getting our numbers of drivers back up to where we wanted to be after the race.
I will inquire the right people, quite frankly, I just don't know the answer. I wondered the same thing when I drove by the police station and saw them all there, and I never bothered to inquire, but I will for council.
And, and Mr. Bernier, as the representative who's often here representing the administration, thank you very much for always patiently taking our questions that are well outside your area of legal expertise and tracking them down for us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCullough?
Thank you, Council President. Everybody out there, mark January 28th down on your calendars, 1 to 3 o'clock at Eddie Edgar, your Detroit All-Stars hockey team is going to go up against the Red Wings alumni for the third year. We got beat by them a big time. Councilman Donavick was with me last year, and Coach Jolly was there. We don't know if we're gonna bring Coach Jolly back, but we're thinking about it.
I coached the Livonia All-Stars, not the Detroit All-Stars.
That's fair. That's fair. But it's a great time, and all proceeds will go to Livonia Kids and Families, and you get to watch us get beat up by some legendary hockey players. Thank you.
And for a special donation, they'll take care of Mr. McCullough for you. Is there anything else from the council? Seeing none, we will go directly to our agenda for this evening. Oh, Ms. Clerk, do you have an announcement?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Something going on?
Yeah, something's going on. So I just wanted to give a little election update. Okay, there's an election next Tuesday, November 7th. I'm gonna start with absentee ballots. As of today, we have issued 19,043 ballots, and 10,849 have been returned, so it puts us around 57% return rate. If you still have your absentee ballot, you have time to return it to us. It needs to be with the city clerk by 8 o'clock on election night. You can drop it off here...
You can drop it off here at City Hall or any one of the other number of boxes. We have one at the Kirksey Rec Center, Bicentennial Park, Sandberg Library, Clement Circle, and Newburgh Village. Please know all the boxes, and I get a lot of questions about these boxes. They've been secured, and they all have internet and cameras on them twenty-four-seven, so anyone that has questions about that, that has been taken care of. And just to let people know, there are some things coming up here for this weekend. As of Friday, the city clerk's office is open for election purposes only. You can come in and get an absentee ballot or register to vote in person. You can register to vote in person here at the clerk's office up until election night at eight o'clock. And on Saturday, we will be open from seven-thirty to three-thirty for election purposes only, and you can come in, register to vote, get an absentee ballot. On Monday is the last time you can get an absentee ballot, and that is at four o'clock on Monday afternoon. And if you need to come in, we will be here, we will be issuing ballots, and we can register people to vote. Again, open for only election purposes only on Monday, and then Tuesday, obviously, is the election day, and the polls are open from seven AM until eight PM.
Thank you, Ms. Nash. Now we're going to go to the agenda. We have reports from the administration, a communication from the Department of Finance dated October seventh, twenty twenty-three, forwarding various financial statements of the city of Livonia for the month ending August thirty-one of twenty twenty-three, and another communication from the Department of Finance dated October seventh, forwarding the departmental purchase reports for the month ending September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. We're now going to go to the consent agenda tonight, that's items one through eleven. These items were previously studied at the October sixteenth study meeting and found to require no additional study. They will be voted on as a single item. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So move.
Support.
We have a, an approving motion by Vice President Toy with support from Mr. Barr. Is there any comment from the audience on the consent agenda tonight? That's items one through eleven. Seeing none, Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. The consent agenda passes. We do not have any unfinished business tonight. We do have some new business, though. Starting with number twelve, a request to receive a letter of support from the city council. This comes to us from Kyle Morton of Ashley Capital, in order to provide supportive documentation pertaining to establishing a conservation easement along the Bell Branch of the Rouge River following the proposed stream improvement project and support for the acquisition of a portion of the MDOT right-of-way along I-275 that includes a portion of the proposed project.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan.
I'll offer an approving.
Support.
Approving by Donovan, support from McCullough. Any comments on this project from the council? I see none. Any comments from the audience on item twelve? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. Item twelve passes. On to thirteen, a request to accept stormwater facilities maintenance agreement from the Engineering Division from Althea B. Phipps Apartments LLC in conjunction with the construction of a storm drain system that provides adequate drainage for the newly constructed apartments on the west side of Farmington, south of Five Mile, in the northeast quarter of Section Twenty-One. Motion, please.
So move.
Support.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Barr, support from Mr. McCullough. Is there any comment from the council? I see none. Any comment from the audience? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote on thirteen, please.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. Thirteen passes. Fourteen is a request to accept stormwater facilities maintenance agreement from the Engineering Division from HFIA Eight LLC in conjunction with the construction of a storm drain system that provides adequate drainage for the new gas station located at two-seven-four-three-zero-seven-mile road in the southeast quarter of Section One. Can I have a motion?
Move approval.
Support.
Support.
Is that motion from Mr. Barr?
Yes.
With support from Vice President Toy? Is there any comment on this item from the council? Any comment from the audience? Seeing neither, Ms. Nash, take the vote on fourteen, please.
Councilmember Morgan.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Aye.
Vice President Toy.
Aye.
Councilmember Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember Donovan.
Aye.
President Jolly.
Aye. Fourteen passes. Fifteen is a request to schedule a closed committee of the whole meeting from the Department of Law for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and attorney-client privileged communications with respect to Middlebelt Plymouth Venture LLC versus the city of Livonia, that's U.S. District Court case two colon two-two dash C V dash one-two-seven-three-four. Can I have a motion?
Support.
Was it supported? Was it the motion?
Yeah, motion.
Motion to approve from Mr. Morgan.
Support.